Knocking her, are we good? Will he just hear us?
Yeah.
I just told him that we're good. Oh, perfect, okay. All right. Good evening. I will open the meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Ferndale Wednesday, October 15th at 6:31 PM. And we will start with a roll call, please. Okay. Sorry, that's you.
Chair Foster.
Here.
Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Shaw Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Maschelli, did I pronounce that right?
Here.
Commissioner Pollocka.
Here.
Commissioner Subakatani.
Here.
And Commissioner Newman.
Here.
And Commissioners Azar and Brazen let us know that they would not be available tonight. I think we might be waiting on Chris.
Is Chris just, yeah, there could be a train.
There is.
Next point. Because he lives on that side, so.
Looking for our motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse?
Support.
Motion from Shaw Walter, support from Pollocka, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have approval of minutes. We have two meeting minutes this evening, first for the consideration of approval of the May 14th, 2025 meeting minutes, and second for the consideration of approval of the August 20th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Do these need to be two separate motions? Okay. I wasn't here on the 20th, so I'm not going to make the motion.
So I would make a motion to approve the May 14th meeting minutes?
Support.
A support by Newman and a motion by Newman and support by Pollocka, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any problems?
Make another motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 20th?
Support.
A motion by Newman, support by Pollocka? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Next we have a call to audience, if anyone would like. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the agenda. Thank you Vice Chair Shaw Walter for pointing that out. Tonight we have just one discussion item on Martin Road Park improvements. Any changes or comments on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
A motion by Shaw Walter, a second by Maschelli, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, sorry. Next, we are at the call to audience, so if anyone would like to speak on any item?
No.
Looks like do, thank you. Come all the way up.
Hi. I'm Michael Hennessy, I'm the owner of the restaurant Housed By You on Woodward Avenue. We've gone through a lot of construction over the past 25 years here, and I've told my staff with confidence that we'll get through this, and a year from now, things will be back to normal or perhaps even better. It's just the cost of doing business in the city and on a major road. But the bike lane project on Woodward and the current development on Vester, when completed, is going to put us in an even more difficult situation than we're in now. The number one complaint my customers have had over the last 25 years has been parking, and those conversations have doubled. We've already seen a 20% drop in business while we're still enjoying nice, you know, fall weather. And since the change is so new, customers who are unaware of the parking laws may factor this into their decisions about future visits. Multiple path parking studies showed that the east side of Woodward had a significant parking deficit, even greater than the west side. The parking study the city paid for after the approval of Vester Flats came to the same conclusion, and I think there was a quote in there that said, "The Vester Flats will increase the deficit beyond the number of spaces that were removed." I'm not sure if this committee had access to the early reports. I came up here and I quoted some of them just from memory, and I got ahold of a copy much later on. But the reports that were published on the DDA's website deleted all the east side parking figures and conclusions. And so I don't know if this committee got to see them, or if they did see them, if they saw the unedited version. If any, I have the unedited versions, if anyone would like to see them. The truth is that Vester Parking Lot turned over about three times on a Friday and Saturday night, and there was plenty of people that parked there during the course of the week. There's probably two or more people on average per car. Those people who went to the restaurants, clubs, concert venues, and bank facilities, mostly in our quarter of Ferndale. That's over 1,000 people who came to support your local businesses just Friday and Saturday nights. And every study said, even at that, those early ones, that we still had a deficit. And that's, you know, that's before the Elks exploded with, you know, they have close to 1,000 members now. Council approved the Vester Flats by a three to two vote because they were confident there would be a parking structure where Ferndale Collision stands. And my comment at that time is I asked them to wait until it was a sure thing, and more importantly, that it was even under construction, because we know how long it takes to get things approved, we know how long it takes for that. Just like with the Baker's project that they asked me to help talk about, I said they wanted to build the building and then build the structure. I said, no, build the solution, then build the building. So obviously, that doesn't happen, and I don't know the status of that. So I just want to make sure that the Planning Commission considers this before they make approve any other developments in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the data as we move forward, so it's always helpful to hear from you. And if you could, if you want to send that study to me or to Melissa, and we can forward it to the rest of the Planning Commission.
Okay. It's big.
Okay.
It's, well, you know what, I think I can download it and send it to you. All right, thank you.
Through the chair, can I address the gentleman? So I just want to touch two points. One, I think you brought up the Baker College, that's no longer an option, that project is long gone.
Oh, I know.
Okay.
But the reason I brought that up is, you know, they said when we were considering it, at that time, their proposal was that they were going to build a building because our students aren't going to, don't drive cars anyway, so we don't even need the structure. But we're going to build a building and then build the structure. I said, no, you have to, because we, you know, there's no guarantee that they would stay and complete the project, just like there is no guarantee that Ferndale Collision was going to become a parking structure, because it's very difficult to do. You know, it took how many years to get the DOT done? It's just not an easy proposition, and if we felt that it was important for the businesses to have that, I said, you gotta make sure it's a done deal first.
The other point that I wanted to share is at the council meeting on Monday, I'm assuming you might not be aware of this, but council passed turning Vester from the alley to Bermuda into a one-way street going east. So if you're coming off of Woodward, you can go all the way through, you can go to the alley, you know, turn on the alleys, but you can't come west from Bermuda to the alley. And as part of that, we're putting in diagonal parking on one side, which will increase parking spaces by 14. Now, I know that doesn't solve that problem, but I just want you to know that council is and continues to look at opportunities to increase our parking options on.
I did see that, and that's encouraging. And it's something that, that I've made that suggestion to other committees in the past, that it would make sense, and maybe, you know, that the alleys are one-way. And I know there's some difficulty with that, too, but for us, too, and something else that I didn't mention, and excuse me, I know it's gone over the normal time, but coupled with the Vester situation is the loss of parking on Woodward. And that's not just a loss of parking, it's a loss of a safe way for our guests to drop off people, because the typical thing now, someone drops them off, you wait 10 minutes or more for them to find a parking space, but they, there is not a good spot for them to safely drop off their guests. And so they're using the bike lanes to do it, because it's, frankly, it's safer. And I don't blame them. I've gone out and told them, they said, no, you have to, you know, this is a bike lane and everything, yeah, but I'm not leaving my mom out on the street. So that's had also, you know, the two combined is a major pick, even on carryout. There's not an easy way for our guests just to come in and just to get food to go, because there's, there's no place for them to leave their car.
Yeah, and I've seen in cities where they have specific, like, carryout spots, and maybe that's something that we can look at moving forward, too, especially with some, and there's so often a name for lift draft, you know, and actually, we've talked about doing that in front of the apartment building on West Nine Mall.
Yeah, where the, yeah, by the, west of the church or the payless.
Yeah, so we'll take it.
I've talked, you know, if we, 25 years ago, we had valet on Woodward, because there was a, there was a parking issue. But there were seven parking spaces in front of the restaurant, you know, from Como to the Elks, and so the valets had a place they could stage the cars. They could, you know, they could hold this car here, grab the next car, bring the next car in, they had, well, there's no way to do that option either.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Chris Hall joined us at 6:40.
Okay.
PM. Yes, thank you, well, we'll look into those options, and we really appreciate you coming and giving feedback, and we'll direct staff to, and obviously, we'll keep in mind, as we're talking about parking and future developments, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional audience, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which would be 8A, the Martin Road Park Improvements.
I'm going to pass it over to Lorena from Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Hey, Lorena, thanks for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me. It's always good to come to another meeting. So we got the Parks and Rec Commission, and then now the Planning Commission, so you can see what we, what they see all the time. All right, so I'm not sure if you all are familiar or have been to Martin Road Park recently, but there have been a lot of improvements that have already taken place there. I had to add a little bit of artwork here, because it's not updated in Google Maps, but some of the new things include a new full-court basketball court, as well as a pickleball court that has four courts on it. Over to the east, between the parking lot and the baseball diamond, we now have an ADA accessible path here that leads right to the main path from the parking lot. We also made some improvements in the parking lot, some ADA improvements as well, with van accessible spots. What you don't see here is a pavilion, which is, which was placed right where this old basketball court was, like, a little more than, a little less than a half size of a basketball court, but now it's a pavilion with additional accessibility walking paths there for, walking paths for accessibility to the, to and from the pavilion. And then other amenities such as drinking fountains, so on and so forth. So this is how it stands now. Some of the existing things, you have a pavilion under the trees right here in the center. In front of that is a old building that once was like a facility, a service building in a way, and storage. And then to the west of that is currently where we have the restrooms. And then a pavilion, I mean, I'm sorry, and a play structure here. So that is Martin Road Park. So what we are doing here, what we're trying to do is to build, I'm sorry, what we are doing, because we're in motion already, we are building a Martin Road Park service facility, building which will pretty much house restrooms, concession stand, storage space, we plan on doing equipment lending out of that area as well, and then a small office for park staff that are attending to the park for whether it's daily events or DPW or what's happening, whatever's happening there. We have secure grant funding for this project. We also need, one of the most important things that is included in this project are the restrooms. So we built a splash pad right around COVID time, and what comes with that is you have to have a certain amount of toilets, as they call it, or restroom facilities to accommodate the capacity of the splash pad. So what we have now is not enough. So if you've been out there and you've seen porta potties in the past, that's so we can have 280 people attend, come to our splash pad, and we not be in violation of our license with MDNR permit. That was only a temporary fix, and so two years ago, they said you can no longer do that, so we had to reduce our capacity to 50, which accommodated the amount of restrooms that we have at the park. So this building, we will have more restrooms, men and women, of course, and a family restroom, and so we can increase our capacity back up. We don't think we need 280, we don't think we'll get that many people, but we, we're definitely almost tripled in what we have. So for this project, we did have a lot of community engagement, which included the master plan process, and this project is in our five-year master plan for Parks and Rec, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We also presented it to our park, during our park commission meetings. We are working with our architect, who is Newman Smith, and we held several meetings with the community all last year, which, before the election last November. And we got a lot of good input from the community. Some of that input that was key included prioritizing the function over the size of the building, we didn't necessarily need a big building, we just need to make sure that it was usable. We also, again, have an accessible, accessible restrooms. We wanted to maintain, they wanted to maintain the green space and the park aesthetics, so we wanted to make sure that the building didn't look like it was popped in place, but fit in, as well as minimizing the amount of trees or land that's disturbed. And the community also wanted a covered seating area as well, so if you go to concessions, you can sit under, like, the awning or some type of porch-like structure, not necessarily pavilion, because we already have those there, but just somewhere to relax. I mentioned earlier that we did secure some funding for this project, and currently, the project is 100% grant funding. We got $2.1 million from MDNR Spark Grant, HUD Grant, as well as the Michigan Community Enhancement Grant. And we anticipate the project to fall within that 2.1, that includes engineering fees and all the planning that goes into it. What you see here is the master plan for this area of the park, towards the north area, if you can see my arrow here, that's where the building will go. The current restroom building falls within this area, as well as the green building, so we call it right in front of the pavilion, that's no longer in use, falls right in this area as well. Some additional things that aren't part of this building construction, but part of the overall project, includes expanding the play area. So to the west of the park, there's an old play structure that is unsafe, it's underwater most of the time, whenever it rains, and it's just not usable by the public, but it's the one that's the most fun. So we are actually, we applied for another MDNR grant, which we should hear about December, whether or not we get that funding, to remove and put in a new play structure. And I do want to give a shout out to Oakland County, because we do have a grant for them in about $64,000 to put in a play structure, but more like a play piece, not a large play structure, because they're pretty expensive now. So what you'll see here are the two areas, this is the existing playground, and then just north and south of that is where we plan to expand it. And with this building, again, it's very important for us to continue to plan so everything is accessible, and that's why you see all the connections there to the main path, and we will continue to do that with any development that we have. So I'm going to go into what the building is going to consist of, just a little further. I mentioned earlier, we're going to have, like, a covered area here with some picnic tables. The concession stand is on the top right, where you see in this corner, that's where we'll be serving the public here from the concession stand. It also includes, just south of that, rental slash storage. So if we do, when we do equipment rentals, so say somebody wants a basketball or sled or what have you, it would be out of this area. We have a mechanical room, and then moving to the left, we have the men's and women's restroom, across from that is the family restroom, and then next to that area is the janitor's closet. All the way on the far end, we have the operating office here on the top left, and then the bottom right is more storage, but mainly for splash pad materials or anything else that needs to be stored in the park from ourselves or DPW. And this is what it will look like, what we came up with. Again, when we did our community outreach, we went in-depth with the community on what type of materials you want to see, what colors, what type of field, do you want more of a wood-like structure, or, you know, or more of a more modern type? And this is what we had, and it was very well received. And I will show you a different view. So this view is if you're looking from the splash pad. This view is if you're pretty much looking from the pickleball court, so looking east from the pickleball court. This corner here, where you see the windows, that's the staff office that I pointed out earlier, and right behind that with the two double doors, that's where you would have the splash pad slash storage room. Trash cans would go right outside of that, and it's kind of covered with the brick wall here. We are looking into and planning to put a mural on the building, so this is the space where we envision that going. And I want to thank Chris over there for volunteering to be on our subcommittee to help with the process of getting the mural RFP and all that going with the park board. Here's another view, so this is the southwest view from, like, the street over by, from the pickleball side as well. And then if you were standing at the pavilion or the playground, this is the view that you would see of the building here. So our next steps, currently, I think I mentioned earlier that we have produced a draft bid documents. This is grant-funded, so it has to, it's in MDNR's hands to approve it. Once we get that approval, then we will go out to bid. We're anticipating, hopefully, if all things go well, by the end of this month or early November, to put it out the bid and start, and this fall, early winter, to have a finalized contractor selection. And then in the winter, January, February, kick off the project with the site prep, demo, and construction. We anticipate construction going through the winter, all the way through the end of summer. We do have a grant deadline, so this project will be done by the end, by, before October 1st, is the plan. I know that was pretty quick, it's pretty straightforward, you know, we're excited about it. If anybody has any information, here's my email address and direct line, where you can reach me with my extension. Do I have any questions?
Thank you, I'm sure we might have some other questions or comments, just one quick one for me, I'm curious, because I love that you have the trash bin enclosure, I'm curious if there's doors on that, so it's like fully enclosed?
So, yeah, we do not have doors at this time planned that are fully enclosed. It may be something that we can look into the future, something easy that can open, because DPW trucks will be going in and out of that area. So it's something that we discussed before, but at this time, it's not planned.
Okay, it is something that we require of other developers that come to Ferndale to do, and so I think that, you know, of course, the city always wants to reflect the qualities that they want to see in other projects, so I think it might be something just to maybe look into a little bit further.
Yeah, and I don't think that'll be a problem, because we have started that discussion, it's just not in the bid, because it'd be something that we would do outside of the contractors.
Like fairly easy to add on, so that's great.
And also, just double check the dumpster height requirements, because looking at that masonry wall, I don't know what, I don't know offhand what the dumpster height requirements are, but it looks like it's about three feet tall, which isn't going to cover much of a dumpster.
Okay, yep, we'll definitely look into that. I don't think we were putting a dumpster there, per se.
Oh, just trash cans?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we will definitely look into that as well.
It's just trash cans, I don't have a problem with three feet, I just, if it was a dumpster.
And actually, you have visibility over, if it's not out.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I was misunderstood as well, I was thinking it was like a big dumpster that's going there, but you're talking about just individual trash cans, recycle bins, that, okay.
Okay, so that's a little bit different than what, I guess, what we're saying, so, yeah. Obviously, like I said, you know, if we're asking other developers to do something, of course, but if it's not an actual dumpster enclosure, I don't know if we even have requirements for, so it's great that you have a trash enclosure, and of course, we'll, you'll want to see it just as clean as anyone else, so, thank you. Any other?
And I'm sure the neighbors off of, what is that, Orchard Street runs along?
Orchard.
Yeah, it's Orchard. I'm sure they're not going to want to look at trash cans, you know, looking out their front door, so it likes that they just have a brick wall there.
And so, looking at the three, I see three holes on the bottom left side of the plan, so I think it's not true, I assume that's for a three-compartments sink. I just want to make sure that I.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, great.
In the concession stand in this area.
Yeah, okay, great, that is what I wanted to make, and so what kind of things do you plan on cooking in the concession stand?
Yeah, so we want to keep it pretty simple, where we can hire even high school kids to run it.
Okay.
So we want, we're going to have an air fryer, that's the plan, we don't plan on dealing with grease or anything like that, we're not planning to put an oven or stove in there as what, either, but we do want to do like an air fryer, popcorn, nachos, ice cream. We'll be testing some things out, you know, to see what the community, you know, wants the most. If we do provide some other type of food, we may have a grill where we pull out, maybe on hot days, grill some hot dogs or hamburgers or something like that, but mainly general concession food.
That's just why, I was, yeah, talking, getting at the point of just making sure we didn't need a grease dumpster out back.
Right.
So. And I didn't check the mechanical plans, but do you have a grease interceptor in there?
I can double check, but we won't be dealing with grease.
And still, I know that if you wash things like hamburgers and hot dogs and utensils for that, at least I know in certain health departments, they require there being a grease interceptor, if you wash something that may have grease on it. I've dealt with a concession stand in high school that had popcorn, and they said, well, there's, there could be butter residue, and so I want a grease interceptor. Just double check, just to make sure that you guys don't get hit with an expensive ad after the fact.
Sure, thank you.
Could you, could you go back to the view of the building from the street? So this is, this is what neighbors will see from their side?
Mainly, yeah, because it's, you know, it's angled, but here, let me. So it's angled here, so it's not directly on, as you see the back of the building, so they'll see some of this. These are very large, overgrown trees as well, so it's not just a plain view that they would just see the back of the building, they'll also see.
Yeah, it looks like there's good cover, I was just wondering, you know, thinking about sight lighting and the light, because I see the lighting under the pavilion canopy there. I'm assuming it'll be on a timer or something that shuts off at a certain time of night?
Yeah, yeah, well. Well.
Like, is there, is there park lights throughout that are on all night?
There are some park lights that are on all night. We will have to remove a pole that's right around here, that's on all night, and it's DTE pole, and two poles here. So the lighting on the building, we want to keep that to kind of offset the lighting that we're losing.
Yeah, I mean, pathway, pathway lighting, definitely important, I'm just wondering the non-pathway, non-emergency light, lights, you know, if it's, just wondering if it's a standard level lighting, just wondering if it's going to be potentially something that neighbors might say something about? It doesn't look like the lighting that's shown in the electrical plans is anything fancy or special.
Yeah, it'd be on the building. And this may, I can take you back to this view, too. And this may, I can take you back to this view too. So again, this is where the building will be, right around here, so you can kind of get an idea of the tree coverage from the neighborhood.
Uh, through the chair. Um, you mentioned concessions, and we talked a lot about the food. Um, I believe you're also doing rental equipment. So if, like in the wintertime, if someone wants to rent a sled or um, summertime, I don't know, buy a towel. I, I'm not sure what you're planning on doing, but I know that it's more than just food that you're going to be working out of that space, correct?
Correct, so we plan to do equipment rental. Um, at this time, we're hoping we'll still be able to offer it for free, um, but you know, like exchange a license or something like that. But yeah, if somebody needs a basketball or pickleball or a sled or something like that. Um, the idea is this door here be a Dutch door. So then we can open the top part, and then people can come and we can do that exchange right out this area here.
Have we ever thought about doing um, uh, like lockers? So that maybe, you know, on a Saturday, um, and I don't mean lockers for, for clothing, but for rental. So like on a Saturday, maybe I want to play pickleball, but I just want to rent the equipment. So I would, you know, like put a twenty dollar deposit on a rental of the equipment. And then go to this locker, enter in a code that you give me, you know, play with the equipment, put it back. And then when you get it back, you give the, you know, the deposit back. Um, have we thought about doing some, something like that?
Um, I remember at one point, uh, we did look at that briefly. Um, but then when the building changed, the space changed, and we just never revisited that. Because we did have room for lockers inside of this area, it was actually a hallway that went through um, the building. Um, but because, you know, the millage didn't pass, and so things had to be reduced, so we had to take all that out. So at this time, I think we want to first make sure that there's a need, you know what I mean? And we get a lot of people, because you know, people may not want, they want to bring their own stuff. And before we make that investment, um, we'll kind of figure it out. And then I'm sure some kind of way, we can add that into, into the outside of the building if we can.
Okay. Um, that brings me to the next point, which you just mentioned, was the original plan was for a much larger building.
Yeah.
And um, I'm just wondering, how does this new plan fit in with potential expansion in the future? Like, did we take the old plan and basically just chop off all the meeting rooms and, you know, gathering spaces? And just kind of put this basic design into it? Or was this completely redesigned because it's now a new, new project?
Um, so. Taking me back, I gotta remember the old design, um.
I know it's similar, but I just remember that there was a lot, you know, like, the south side had a lot more access to like the bathrooms and all of that. And it, it looks like there's just this solid wall now on the, on the south side, that, well, with windows. Um, but, you know, it doesn't look like if you added something on the south side, that you would easily be able to access those restrooms for the building? If you added on, you know, community rooms or, you know, recreation rooms, et cetera.
Yeah, it was um, reconfigured, um, we had a couple areas we were considering. Um, originally, I think that it was going to go over here. Um, and we were going to relocate the playground over to this side.
Okay.
Um, because it was going to be a bigger building, and then we could have more space to do that expansion. And then we had to make a decision. Do we plan for a potential building in an area that may have more impact? Or, um, and that may not happen? Or do we go in an area that is a little more centralized, can accommodate what we're trying to do now? And that makes the most sense at the time. And it was also cheaper for us to go in this area, because we don't have to, one of the reasons, we don't have to remove the playground. Um, and it's less impact, you know, to trees and all that as well than what the original plan was.
Well, and you're closer to the waistline.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, other thing I wanted to touch off of, which was the outdoor lighting. Uh, um, our, um, our ordinance requires that all outdoor lighting be down. So that, you know, we, we're not spotlighting out into the park or anything like that. Um, so I just want to make sure that all of our lighting design is for down focus.
What I saw in the drawing, it's all under the, under the roof pavilion.
Uh, okay, I, well, I didn't know if they were going to add any lighting on the side of the buildings, because like, we're getting rid of some of that DTE path lighting. And I didn't know if maybe in the uh, north side, that we were going to add lighting to also light the path.
At this time, we don't have a budget to add any additional lighting.
Uh, and then the other, the only other thing is, is on the south side, um, maybe we could consider another mural, you know? So it's just not this blank wall. You know, there's some windows, but why are you smiling? Um, you know, there's some windows, but I'm just thinking, you know, to make it a little more attractive from anybody traveling along Orchard.
Yeah, and we do have space for that. That was in one of the um, potential areas, we could potentially put it back there as well.
That's.
And it's not a very large wall either, it's not like a looming, like, big empty wall or anything.
Yeah.
But I think it's, yeah, I agree, that it would be nice to have either plantings or a mural or something that just brightens it up a bit potentially. Any other comments for Lorraine?
Not for me. Um, through the chair, um. Oh my God, I just lost my train of thought. Uh, with the building access, what time will the access be for the building? Uh, with um, access for the bathrooms and whatnot?
Yeah, so um, currently, it'll be our, like our normal times, you know? And if we have an event or a late softball game or something, we'll probably, we'll keep it open. Um, everything will be locked and secured, there'll be cameras inside as well. So if, you know, we won't have twenty-four, we don't have people in the building observing the whole time. So um, it'll be, the restrooms will be available during normal park hours, as, as of now, that's the plan.
And um, I know in the past, some folks were getting stuck in the restroom and getting basically locked out. Is there parameters around that?
Um, yes, so. There will be like a emergency release button, I believe, here in the family restroom. The other two restrooms, um, I think will be open. Uh, I can get back to you, I have to confirm, it's been a minute, but I have to confirm that, but I think these will mainly be open and not locked.
And then with the tables, would they be also ADA compliant?
Yes.
Well, alright, and then my last question, uh, in regards to grills and whatnot. Um, what is the plan to place them throughout the area of the building? If it's happening?
Yeah, at this time, there's no conversation of putting the grills around this area. Um, we do have a, a grill by the pavilion, um, and we'll probably put one by the other pavilion too. There's some older ones on the west side of the park. Um, so there are grills at the park, but there's nothing planned to be placed here, because we'll have our concessions there. So we don't really want anything too close, unless you're talking about the grill where we're going to grill. Talking about public grills? Oh, yeah, yeah, so we, we're not planning to put anything right around this area.
Um, I had a question for all of us. Do we need like a container for any kind of coals, if they're um, done being burned and whatnot? Because I know some folks are dumping them on the grass currently.
Yeah, um, I actually met with DPW this week, we're talking about getting like a um, a ash um. Um, container, where people can dump it, and it's locked, because we were concerned about kids getting in there and playing with hot coals, you know? But yeah, so we're working on that now.
Just in general, I'm excited for this project. I, I went to the splash pad with my son earlier this year, and there was no place for me to change his diaper. And so we had to find a clandestine bench and out of view to change, and so I'm glad that this is being provided for now.
A great project, thank you, any other comments?
The only one is, uh, when does construction start and when do we expect this to be done? I know that you flashed it up there, but I didn't get a chance to really look at the dates and times.
Yeah, sorry about that, I was moving kind of fast. So um, we're planning construction to start in the winter of twenty-six. And then um, we have to be finished by the end of um, September. So the plan is to, yeah.
You say winter, I think winter like next year.
Oh, yeah, no, like January to September.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
Awesome, well, thank you so much, we look forward to um, seeing the completion of this project.
If you don't mind, I just want to recap some of the, make sure I didn't miss anything. Um, there was a question whether or not we had grease.
It's, I checked the mechanical plans, you do have it, ignore my comment.
Okay, scratch that. And then making sure the path lining is pointing down, which we are doing. So we are all set with that, no follow-up. And then, um, we talked about the murals or paint, or plantings on the back of the building. And then I follow up with the restrooms, the men's and women's restrooms being open, which I believe they are. Um, it's just the family restroom that'll have a lock on it, because kids may be in there with, you know, families. Um, and then the gate for garbage, even if we just have a trash bin, we still need to have that enclosure.
I think, so we were all kind of thinking that it was more of a dumpster enclosure, and we have very specific rules for dumpster enclosures. If it's not, if you're not going to anticipate a dumpster, um, I think the. The gist of it is that it's kind of an enclosed area where you can maintain the trash, and then it's kind of kept out of view. And basically for um, sanitary and visual reasons, so.
So I'm, I'm assuming they're like hundred gallon, you know, um, plastic, you know, trash cans with the lids.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that what you have is probably sufficient, um.
Okay. So no fence necessary, it's optional, not saying we won't do it, but. Was there anything else that I'm missing from any of your comments?
Looks like you already really adjusted everything, we were just kicking the tires.
Well, I appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us. Alright, um, do we have any administrative items?
Um, so the only item is that we um, are working on the twenty-twenty-six Planning Commission meeting calendar. Um, so if you guys are in love with the Wednesdays, we can keep that. Um, but if you wanted to consider switching it up, um, just let me know. Um, I do have to finalize that calendar um, by mid-November, so just let me know your feedback sooner rather than later.
Kind of on that topic, um, as a reminder, I guess new for you, um, I will be moving in April of next year. Um, so my position will be.
Okay.
Open after then, so I'll just have the three, first three meetings of next year.
Is there anyone who would like to discuss changing times? I feel like, um, if she needs to have it in the next kind of four weeks, I know. Juggling schedules can be difficult, so it might be good to just talk it over if there's. But I think that this time has worked out for the most part for everyone.
It's kind of worked into my routine at this point, so.
Okay, and if there's no other changes at the city and this works, then we'll, um, alright, and if anything changes, email Melissa, she is.
Yes, please, thanks.
Thank you.
Do you see any, do you see um, next month, there being enough agenda items for there to be a meeting?
Um, at this time, I don't believe there will be a meeting.
Okay.
Which might mean there is a December meeting, unfortunately.
Yes.
Um, so if you don't think you can be available for that, let us know in advance, um, because I know December is hard. Okay, so Sam will be gone for the December meeting.
Um, would that be still the third Wednesday, December seventeenth is what we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, any commission items? I do have a question, have we had a BZA meeting?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
Alright, well, if there is nothing, then we will adjourn the meeting at seven fifteen PM, thank you.